Oh.
It's a new one.
Always? Set them down normal.
I would just do five under his face.
Let me show you how this is done. Oh, no.
Who's that? My name is Katie. I was married to a sister. Katie, Katie, all of the drugs. She's crazy. You should worry. So she, every time we stopped, every time Katie, she'd be like, she's crazy. We stopped immediately.
She hasn't handed it here yet. Does that mean, are these for either designed tonight or are they going in?
We start.
What are they? Is this, are they on?
Did you need your paper?
Yeah, they'll have slideshows.
That's cool.
How's the other way?
I have no feeling in that way. I'm just gonna have to.
It's Saturday, Friday, Saturday.
What's his name?
Friday, yeah, yeah, Friday. Are these all the same?
Yeah. They're two different.
Okay, okay. I just threw them right on top. Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Everybody ready? Is everybody ready?
Yeah, I can't vote yet.
Okay. Seven thirty has arrived. I will call this meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Terry Wykam.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seeloff.
Here.
Councilmember Jaclyn Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. I would look for a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve the May twenty first, twenty twenty four city council agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to approve the May twenty first, twenty twenty four city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Saying none. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Lynn, aye. Mayor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't know what to go.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
I don't know if I'm logged in or not. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is to, the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Lumen?
I move to approve the city consent agenda of May twenty first, two thousand twenty four as presented.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to approve the city consent agenda of May twenty first, twenty twenty four as presented. Is there any discussion? Saying none. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Lynn, aye.
Myra, I might need your help here for a second. Aye, yeah.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
I'm sorry to. I apologize for the delay. At this time, I'll open a public hearing. This public hearing is approval of a special use permit, PZ twenty four oh five dash zero zero one for daycare in home located at twenty nine seventy nine Shetland Drive, more specifically known as lot eighty three Highland Town subdivision, Rollins, Wyoming. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on that issue? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing and I would open up another public hearing, which is a resolution authorizing the amendment of, the amendment, the city of Rollins Fee Schedule Appendix E. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to that issue? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing and at this time, the next thing on our agenda is public or citizens' participation. This is a time for the public to comment pursuant to Resolution number two C dash nineteen ninety six. It sets a time limit for the public comment of five minutes on things that are not on the agenda. And if you wish to speak, now is when. Come to the podium, state your name, and sign in if you would. All right. Looks like we're done. The next thing on our agenda is a proclamation. This is a proclamation of the city of Rollins honoring the Rollins High School and Victory High School graduating classes of two thousand twenty four. Whereas the city of Rollins takes great pride in its tradition of academic excellence and community spirit, and whereas the Rollins High School and Victory High School graduating classes of two thousand twenty four have successfully completed their high school education, demonstrating dedication, perseverance, and a commitment to learning. And whereas these graduates have not only excelled in academics, but have also participated in extracurricular activities, athletics, and community service, enriching the school and the city of Rollins. And whereas the graduating class represents the future of our community, poised to contribute their talents, skills, and leaderships in years to come. Now therefore, I, Terry L. Wykam, Mayor of the city of Rollins, do hereby proclaim the city's deepest congratulations to the Rollins High School and Victory High School graduating class of two thousand twenty four. We, the citizens of Rollins, acknowledge your accomplishments and celebrate this momentous occasion in your lives. We are confident that you will continue to achieve great things and make a positive impact on the world. So proclaimed this twenty first day of May, two thousand twenty four. Would you like to speak to that, sir? Anybody?
Thank you. Mr. Wykam, I'm Mike Hamel, Superintendent with Carbon County School District Number One. This is Ms. Garner, Principal at Rollins High School. On behalf of the district, I'd like to thank you for recognizing our students. They've worked incredibly hard. This group of kids, of course, had to go through COVID a few years ago and, and had things interrupted, but they've persevered and done a great job. We're very proud of them and all signs are that things are headed in a really positive direction in our district.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for supporting our school. Specifically, Rollins High School wants to send a big thank you to the city of Rollins for partnering with parents to do the banners. It's quite a prideful moment to drive down the street and see the accomplishments and see the kiddos and what they're doing. So we want to send a big thank you to the city for partnering with our school initially during COVID, but with our parents following. We really appreciate that for our kiddos, to celebrate them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your hard work in raising our kids right, and thank you very much. All right. The next thing on our agenda is another proclamation. This is a proclamation, May thirty first, as Arbor Day. Whereas the Wyoming State Legislature has adopted an act designating an Arbor Day, and whereas it is the purpose of the designation of this day throughout the nation to encourage the planting of shade and forest trees, to encourage the harvesting of forests by approved conservation methods, and to encourage the protection of our forests from misuse that destroys the beauty and utility of the forests as well as their wildlife. And whereas through the cooperation of all residents of the city of Rollins, the beneficial effects of tree planting can be materially increased. And we can pass on enduring heritage of a vital natural resource to succeeding generations. Now therefore, I, Terry L. Wykam, Mayor of the city of Rollins, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim Friday, thirty first, two thousand twenty four as Arbor Day in our community and urge everyone able to do so to observe this day by planting at least one tree and participating in Arbor Day celebration by the city and other sponsors. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Rollins, Wyoming to be affixed this thirty first day of May, two thousand twenty four.
Hi. I am hoping that you guys all have your flyer for Arbor Day and our tree sale. It is on May thirtieth, so Thursday and Friday, the thirtieth and thirty first. We'll be at the rec center from eight AM to five PM. This year marks twenty nine years as Rollins being in the Tree City USA. This year, we got a hundred and six trees from the wholesale nursery in Utah. They'll be ranging anywhere from twelve dollars to seventy dollars. And any remaining trees will be, they've designated the non-fruit trees will go towards the cemetery, and the fruit trees will be planted below the cemetery in the urban orchard. Do you guys have any questions?
No, but I do appreciate your efforts and the trees that were planted there seem to be doing quite well, and it's exciting to see them grow.
Yeah.
So thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is the city council reports and ward update. Carbon County Council of Government and Ward one update is myself. I didn't, I was out of town, did not get, get to go to COG. So I will ask Vice Mayor Sanger, would you mind reporting on the COG?
Sure. So the meeting was held in Dixon. We got an update from Kara Chouquette on Power Company of Wyoming. They have approached the Carbon County Commissioners to approve a conditional use permit that moves their start time back a couple of years from what it was currently to September ninth, two thousand twenty four, to June first, two thousand twenty nine, to align with the availability of transmission lines. So once their lines are all in, we'll be able to sell power. Boom. That was the first thing. And then there was another, another part of that was the towers themselves, twenty five, twenty six? Was that right? End of twenty five, starting in twenty six, we'll start to see towers go up. So as soon as they go on the ground, that means tax money is also coming in with those. We still have impact assistance funding that's coming. They started off their construction season April fifteenth. They have now constructed and built over a hundred and seventy miles of road and a hundred and thirty turbine pads. The original plan was a thousand turbines. They've toned that down to six hundred and twenty-two turbines, but they're much larger turbines. If you've gone to Cheyenne, you know what I'm talking about. It's those turbines you see on the right-hand side of the road right before you get to Cheyenne, that size. So they went back to BLM to get a new siding to make sure that the siding plan they already had, they're just basically taking stuff out of. They're not moving anything. They're just plucking a few of them out of there, giving them a little more space to operate. And then, what was the other thing that we did? Currently, Carbon County is fourteenth in the United States in wind turbines currently. When these six hundred and twenty-two turbines go up, that'll rank us number three in the country in number of wind turbines we have. What else have we covered? We covered our stuff, water. We found out we're not the only one with water problems. Every other community in the city or in the county has some kind of water problem. I can't remember which one, but they installed a new water line and now they have dirt.
Dicks, Dixon.
Dixon. They installed a new water line and now have dirt. That's an interesting one. I don't know how that works. And then the last thing was, the county gave an update, and this is, basically, it's from Lenny, from Emergency. These were, I'm guessing they were all sent to the municipalities, but your HMP twenty-five update reminder for municipalities that their homework tasks and what they have to do. Morgan will update the municipalities on the EOP. I love all these little acronyms. EOP is Emergency Operational Plan Workshop that's coming up, but not, has not been scheduled. We have now made it into the world stage of bicycle racing with the Tour de Wyoming Cycling Tour from Bags Dixon in Catman and Riverside. If you've ever watched the Tour de France, we're higher in the air than any place they have. So they're all gonna asphyxiate, probably trying to ride at that altitude. Reminder, the weekly NWS Wyoming Spring Snow Pack and River Flooding Outlooks virtually weekly. Every Thursday, twelve noon calls. Reach out to Lenny if you need any more information, and that's essentially it. And then we discussed our water and found out we're not alone. So that's about it.
Okay, well, thank you guys for going. I appreciate that. I have nothing else to report. So we'll go to Board of Adjustments and Ward one update from Councilman Seeloff.
We had our meeting the other day for Board of Adjustments and elected the officers and discussed with Lou presented the changes on chapter nineteen on the passing.
And can you bring your microphone closer?
We went through all of that and it should be coming to the council. We'll hear directly for approval.
That's good news. Okay, thank you. The next thing is Urban Systems Committee and Ward two updates. Councilmember Garner?
I don't have any Ward updates. I'll be brief on urban systems since Sherri Schillinger and Trudy Dixon are here to present the urban systems today. I'll try not to talk about everything we can. We had a quick update on the underpass. The geologist is looking at the water table. It's pretty high in that area. So they're gonna look in June, because that should be the highest levels, and see what they have to do, whether or not they're gonna need some type of some system in there when that, when those levels are up with going underneath that road. They're gonna, there was talk about how they're gonna shut down the road. Probably one lane of travel at a time will be done because of the windmills and the oversized loads coming through. So they'll shut down one side, leave one side open, and then instead of having rerouting traffic around town, just wanna work with how big some of those are. So and then they talked about the funding for the Sixth Street Bridge and working, they're looking for funding and talking with the railroad, looking at agreements there. So that's a rough update on that, and I'll let them tell the rest of that.
All right, thank you. The next one is Ward two update. Councilmember Lumen?
I know Colorado has a lot of potholes. Is there a pothole plan in effect? So they kinda have an idea of when they're gonna come and fill them up. That would be great. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. The next one is DDA Main Street and Ward three update. Vice Mayor Sanger?
Okay, I don't have anything from the ward itself, but from the DDA, we had our meeting yesterday. We're still working on the downtown lighting project. We took the master painting up to Jackson Hole Art Gallery. If you have never seen this painting, it is breathtaking. It's forty-eight by forty-eight. And it looks like this. And this is the Snake River overlook, right underneath the Tetons. And this is the actual painting right here. It made the front cover of their auction magazine. So this is the first thing anybody picks up. This is what they see, is this particular painting that we took up to them to work on the auction. This is based on a photograph from Ansel Adams that was taken in nineteen forty-eight. And it ironically still looks exactly like this, because I have a picture of it that I took looking for this to find out where this actually came from. We worked a little bit on our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Adventure Fest, we got an update on that and all the, all the events that are occurring. One of the things we're going to do, usually we go from third to fifth. We're gonna go from third to sixth because we have a lot of businesses on Cedar Street in that space right there, and they want to be part of that whole combination. Pam and Stephanie Kramer went back to Alabama to the Best Practices Workshop for the Main Street Program. And as usual, whenever you go, you bring back a stack of stuff, ideas you've stolen, and you're gonna revamp, repurpose, so to speak. So we'll be getting more information from them. Stephanie's gonna do a whole pitch on that particular thing. Speaking of pitch, the pitch night recap from over in Sinclair, there were thirty people for the startup challenge, and they picked five different businesses, all within Carbon County, to fund money to. We had twenty-five thousand dollars that we distributed amongst those five. I don't know the exact breakdown, but it's like seventy-five, five, and something. The Rollins Music Academy had their ribbon cutting on Wednesday, same night I went to COG, but we didn't have really good representation and they had a packed house. You couldn't get in the door. So that was really fun. I didn't know that, but I went to talk to Mr. Sesko and he said, yeah, you couldn't. You literally had to stand outside and wait for people to leave to go in. So that was pretty cool. Pam went to a funding summit recap, which for us is trying to find money to get curb and gutter. Most of you probably know, if you've been down on that end of town down there. We have a couple of sidewalks that are in dire need of curb and gutter. And then under New Business, we did some gems recognition. That's our fundraising program. We had a recommendation from Economic Vitality. It's one of the subdivisions of the Main Street Program for the Maker Space. I don't know if you've seen the trailer sitting out there. It's a workshop that comes in a trailer that has like nine different things in it that you can go and learn how to do. 3D printers, woodcutting, artwork, that kind of stuff. It's a really cool thing. It's all now upstairs in the DDA building in the main space. The DDA had donated five thousand dollars to the startup challenge, the Carbon County Startup Challenge, to match or to be part of the twenty-five thousand dollars. I already told you about the picture that went to Jackson Hole. Rollins Downtown Fund, we used to have a five oh one C three. We have actually reinstituted it and we're back in good standing as far as that goes. The Splash Pad will be opening Friday, May thirty first. It's a little cold this weekend. And it will be open every day, eleven AM to eight PM, because we have a lot of water. And so we can use that water. Super Saturday is June eighth at nine AM. I got to see a really cool demonstration of AI and how it relates to cities and how the cities can use that information to find business, build business, create business, that kind of stuff, find a place for business. And that was about it. So there you go.
That's quite a bit. Thank you. Sounds like a lot of work. I appreciate that. All right. The next thing on the agenda is Rollins Planning Commission and Ward three update. Councilmember Weisenberg?
We had a meeting last Tuesday, I believe it was. There's a special use permit. It's further on the agenda for daycare, in-home daycare that was recommended by Planning and Zoning. There's some discussion happening on for how to proceed possibly with special use permits and timelines of when they have to renew and how, how that can go or what the process might be. So we got legal looking at that and the staff is looking into how to do that stuff too. So other than that, that's about all for planning and zoning. I had a phone call from an individual in Ward three, wants to talk about permits, like building permits and stuff like that. So I think, I haven't had a chance to contact Lou and see what the actual building code is and stuff like that, but I'll take that on and go from there and then see what can be done later. So. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next thing is Member at Large, Councilmember Wells?
The only thing I had was I had the privilege of graduating from Leadership Wyoming a couple of weeks ago.
Congratulations.
And I wanted to share that I had several classmates from all over the state talk about how wonderful Rollins is. So we're not always viewed as bad, and I just wanted to share that positivity with the group.
That's awesome. Thanks and congratulations.
Yeah.
It's a great program. All right. Next thing on the agenda is an update from Discover Carbon County, Wyoming, on their master plan.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you for having me tonight. First and foremost, I want to say happy National Travel and Tourism Week. Every year in May, there's a week set aside to celebrate travel and tourism, not only throughout the nation, throughout Wyoming and here in Carbon County. In two thousand and twenty-three, Wyoming welcomed over eight point seven million visitors who spent eight, or sorry, four point eight billion dollars. Carbon County visitors through and to and through the county spent about two hundred forty-six point two million dollars, supported one thousand seven hundred thirty jobs, and generated fifteen point one million dollar, million dollars in taxes, travel-generated taxes. Next, I just wanted to do a brief overlook of our tourism master plan. Last year, we took the endeavor and we created a tourism master plan. There was about thirty people involved in the Steering Committee. It took us about six months, maybe a little more, but we came up with the vision that Carbon County Travel Industry's vision is Carbon County offers an authentic Wyoming experience filled with scenic beauty, outdoor recreation options, and unique communities. Then we discovered that we have four strategic opportunities here in Carbon County. Those opportunities are the visitor experience, outdoor recreation, hospitality, and economic development framework, collaborations, and advocacy. I know that you received my PowerPoint, so I'm not gonna read it all. I'll just go over a few of the things. Visitor experience, what we're really focusing on in the next couple of years is the appearance through our county's communities as well as thoroughfairs. We're gonna maybe have a friendly competition between the communities. Our board is really looking into ways to entice pride in each of our communities. We have nine different board members from our areas, so each one of them will take their segment. That will be fun. We're also looking at a cohesive wayfinding sign system throughout the county. One thing is for sure, our board loves your wayfinding signage here in Rollins. So they are investigating that, not to leave Rollins out. We are planning on having maybe a consultant come in and speak to each of our cities and towns to see if you could do something tourism-wise, what would you want to happen? So look forward to that. Outdoor Recreation. I serve on the Southeast Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Collaborative. I'm a Steering Committee member. I've been to a lot of recreation outdoor meetings. They happen every other month, so if you're ever interested in seeing what's out there, I know that the Outdoor Recreation, they have, the department has talked to me, and I know Vice Mayor Steve Sanger and I have spoke about Rim Lake, that is on their radar as well as the BLM. So any kind of participation in that group with me is much appreciated. Hospitality and Economic Development Framework, sorry, trying to speed through this. We're supporting the local workforce. We're starting a new, backing up. During COVID, we had an online training program to kind of teach people about what's there out here in Carbon County to do, what kind of tourism assets do we have, what kind of outdoor rec do we have, what's customer service, that kind of thing. It's really focused for our hospitality businesses. We are working on a brand-new system. Hopefully, we'll launch that this fall. Not only will it be available to hospitality employees, but high school students, anyone that wants to take it is more than welcome to do that. Also, we are looking at having a study done on short-term vacation rentals within Carbon County. I fielded a lot of calls about the effects of short-term vacation rentals, so I don't have a lot of information other than what I've been given. So we're, and it's usually outside looking in. I can tell you that we're not the only county that has difficulties with that, but we thought we'd bring in a professional and have them take a look. We're looking at Young Strategies and maybe a couple of other companies, and that will be within the next year or so. Advocacy, sorry, past that. Advocacy, one of the things that we have done is the tourism master plan can be utilized to support grant requests. I wrote, I've written three, four letters now, giving them information on our tourism master plan, backing up those, uh, grant requests, sorry, grant requests, with tourism ideas and our focus. Current projects and partnerships that we are working on, we are collaborating with Carbon County and Natrona County for the Pathways National Heritage Area. We're having a feasibility study. It's in the process right now. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact me personally. We're also coming beside UW Extension Office with the Carbon County Park Challenge. This is where they have the rubbing, they have a stake, not a stake, but a pedestal in the ground, and they take, you could take a piece of paper. Do you guys know about this?
A little bit.
A little bit. So Abby Perry is in charge of that. Carbon County, or Discover Carbon County has come alongside. Two years ago is when she got her bids. I do know the last time I talked to her, she was hoping to install everything by August. We are gonna be there with additional signage as well as any costs that are over, over and above her grant allowance. Mobile Visitor Center, you will see that at Adventure Fest. We have a Jeep now, so, but we'll have a Jeep there, and we'll also have our other vehicle there with a tent on it with a mobile visitor center. People can come in and see things. Virtual, oh, I gotta back that one up. So we are participating in the Sinclair One Hundred Celebration. We're helping plan that. We're also trying to create a mobile tour or a historic tour for them. It's on our app. I'll speak about that in a minute. And we do have our two thousand and twenty-four travel guides are out right now. I do want to let you know that the person that creates that for us does live in Saratoga. She has done her, I think it's the seventh year? So that's Cindy Luce, if anybody knows that, VIP marketing. Destination optimization, we are doing that through TripAdvisor. You'll be seeing more on that coming in June. Tomorrow, we are having an open house from twelve PM to six PM at our office, one oh five East Cedar. Please come on by for any kind of information, if you want to chat with any, with any of our employees or myself. I should be there. I do have a couple of meetings tomorrow, so late in the day would be better for me. But we have cookies. Please come by. Get a cookie.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Have, have you heard or, or do you know anything about the state's two hundred and fiftieth birthday celebration coming up? Are you in contact with the state about that?
Um, I, we did hear a little bit, I believe, last fall. We heard a little bit, but I can definitely reach out to them.
It's building steam as we go, and Sean Reese did a presentation to WHAM.
Okay.
And there's some money available to help us advertise that and to entice people to come to our area.
Okay, wonderful.
So that is kind of a best-kept secret, but it's out there, so maybe we can beat them to it.
Okay, sounds great. I will definitely reach out to the Wyoming Office of Tourism and Super Dino, and if not, Wyoming Business Council.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Can you give us the time again on the open house?
Twelve PM to six PM tomorrow, May twenty-second. And if you are in the Riverside area, we do have our Riverside Visitor Center open as well, and they'll also have cookies there from twelve to six.
Councilman Weisenberg.
In your presentation stuff, there's a survey. What was the number of people that participated in your survey? You have that on hand?
I do not have that on hand. I do have that information. If it's not in the book, then I'll have to dig it out. I apologize.
Okay.
I wanna say it was, it was fairly good.
I mean, it looks like some pretty good results, and, you know, the residents are actually saying that we, fifty-nine percent said we don't have enough tourism, so we need to lean more that way, it sounds like, and it's tax revenue at that. So I was just curious how many you had participants.
I can get that.
On page five?
Thank you.
Let's skip the audio stuff.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I don't see any. Leslie, thank you for all your hard work.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And it's very much appreciated. All right. Next thing on our agenda is Urban Systems update to the city council.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors, I'm Judy Dixon. I'm the outgoing chair of the Urban Systems Committee. This is Sherry Schillinger. She's the new chairman. And we also have a new vice chairman, Alan Robinson, who's taken that on. So thank you for doing that. Most of, our committee is a very slow-moving committee, and so this report may sound vaguely familiar from when I was here a year ago. But the two, the Urban Systems is a, is a group effort by a local and state government to meet transportation needs of the city and the county. They give the city a certain amount of money each year, and the, the council or commissioners, if it's a project that they're looking at, has the option of saving it and building on it, maybe using it for grants, matching, that kind of thing, or spending it on smaller projects. We have been receiving a hundred and forty thousand a year for a number of years, and we've been, we've been saving it for a big project, which is the pedestrian walkway that Councilman Garner alluded to. So we're hoping that that's gonna start in two thousand, in two thousand and twenty-five, okay, depending on the geology and the water and what happens when they get to that study in June. So the, the good news is that the mayor received a letter in February from the state saying that, that they're gonna be giving Urban, the Urban Systems Fund a hundred and fifty-five thousand a year now. So it's, we, we got a raise, so that's always a good thing. We have a total of one point nine million dollars in the fund, and YDOT's estimate is that it will pretty much take care of it, this big project that they're starting next year on the two eighty-seven bypass. So like I said, we move slow, but it's, we're, we're still there. And at the last meeting, the city attorney gave a really good, good explanation of the request that we made last year, which was to look at all the statutes, ordinances, bylaws, and try to get something into resolution form so it could be more of a working document. And so you heard all that last week, and we're hoping that, that that work will be done by July, because we have another meeting scheduled. And then after that, it'll be up to date so everybody can look at it and see, see what it, what the resolution is. And then if the, if the YDOT needs changes or anybody, anybody working on projects need changes, it won't have to go through three readings, it could just be a resolution change. Thank you for doing that. Okay. And then Councilman Garner gave the, mentioned the other project, which is the Overpass Project. The good news, I guess, about that is that this is, although it's Urban Systems, it's gonna be ninety percent funded by the state on the repairs, and so Rollins, City of Rollins will be only, I was gonna say liable, but that's not a good word, is only responsible for a ten, one, ten percent of that, which is two hundred thousand, if the, a council opts to participate in that. So you'll be hearing more about that as, as time passes here. It's in sad need of repair underneath, is what we're told, which doesn't give me great comfort driving over, but we're all in the same boat.
Just drive fast.
Yeah. That's a whole nother issue. I think that everything else has been covered by council and Garner and city attorney. So are there any questions? Okay. We just meet a couple times a year, so that's why I say we, we, we're working, we work slow on big projects, so.
I don't see any questions, but we do have guards here. It's from the staff and the council, and it's, thank you notes for all of your hard work, and I would just like to give you those.
Okay.
So thank you.
There you go, sure, you can hand it out. Thank you.
Yes. Could you email us that letter they were talking about that was in February from YDOT?
You have that? Could you put, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else before we move on? All right. City manager and staff reports. I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and distinguished members of the council. To start off tonight, as usual, I've got some dates for you, for some future special meetings for budget and a few things. The first thing that we'd like to announce is the first reading of the budget will be tomorrow night here in the council chambers, and that will start at seven thirty. We had originally planned on six, but because of some council members not being able to, to make it, we moved that to seven thirty tomorrow night.
Okay.
The second reading of the budget will be during the council meeting on June fourth, and then we will have a special meeting for the third and final reading of the budget on June thirteenth, which is a Thursday, and we have not set the time for that as, as of yet. Usually, if the first and second readings go well, that will be usually a shorter meeting on the third. So there are those dates. The Rollins Fire Department will be doing their annual firefighter five K obstacle run, and that will be this Saturday, May twenty-fifth, and I do not have a time for that. Do you have a time?
We'll start the meeting by eight AM, and the race will kick off at nine. Breakfast will be at eight thirty. We'll start feet and colors.
And it'll start at the fire station two?
Yeah, every, the race will actually start and, and there at Station Two. They'll run up to the underpass and around and to Rollins Springs Park and stuff. They have a bunch of obstacles and things up there, so.
It's fun.
Okay, thank you, Chief Robinson. Wednesday, June fifth through June seventh is WHAM this year in Pinedale, for those that will be attending. The WHAM. So last meeting, I was asked to look into Edinburgh Street on the construction and the status of the six penny tax that we have. So I can report to you that we currently, lost it, we currently have just over four million dollars in the six penny fund, and our estimates right now that we just received today on Edinburgh is seven point six million with a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency, for a total of about eight point six five million. We estimate at the rate that it is coming in, the six pennies, about one million three hundred seventy-five thousand a year. So if we wait on that, we are currently about two point seven five million short on six penny funds. So if, if we wait for those revenues, we're probably two to three years out before we can cover that with six penny funds. can cover that with six penny funds. With this project at eight point six five million, the total six, six penny issue that, that, that remains is about eleven point one million, and so Edinburgh's gonna eat up approximately seventy percent of those remaining funds, and we still have eight different projects listed, so we will discuss specific purpose tax, six, six penny, and Edinburgh, and all, all these things tomorrow night at the special meeting, as they flow through the budget, but I wanted to give you an update of that. Yes, Councilman, your turn.
I just had a quick question. Oh, do you remember, does anybody recall the original number about two years ago, what that number was? Was it, I could've swore the bid was much lower, and it almost sounds like it's gone up threefold, is that?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, Councilman Garner, the original bid was two million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and
That was, that was a bid from two years ago?
Eight point six five million at this point, so.
Two, two or three years ago that bid come through?
Yes, this is when the issue, you know, when it passed, that was the original issue that was shared on the ballot, and I believe that was about four, three, four years ago.
Councilman Weisenberg?
I think you're alluding more so of there was a, a engineering RFP that went out in a bit, like a, a package come through with a price like three years ago that I, I'm not for sure, but I think, thought it was in like a six, five and a half to six million dollar range, but then, the, the problem was, is it included some private property, I believe, so they had to go back to the engineering, and I think we, there should be some discussion on that private property, because I, not a hundred percent, but a former councilman said that there was some agreements and stuff with that, that allowed the city to kind of take that over, the, through that street, and we might look through that, because we might not have had to go back and have it re-engineered, and there was some other stuff involved in that, that would've had them paving their streets, possibly, their own streets, and putting curb and gutter in, is my understanding when the person that was talking, so I think we might have to kind of go back and look at that, because that would be something we probably should incorporate within this, if that was kind of an agreement to talk to. I don't know if that property's changed ownership or not, but I'd look into it if we could.
Cody, did you have something you wanted to add?
I might be able to speak to this a little bit. That, the property has changed hands a couple times, and it's, realistically, our infrastructure is gonna go down, our, our easement through there anyway, so we're just trying to acquire the right-of-way with the current owner, so the city can take over, and, and that section of paving, it isn't, the cost of it isn't as much as one would think, just doing the asphalt section. This, that, you're right, it was, a couple years ago, it was about six million, around six million, was an estimate, but looking at the numbers now, that was a, an estimate with the street just cut into pieces and patched back together, well, the, the way it is in six penny, it's a complete street rebuild, so we went back and put new asphalt in through the whole street. If we're gonna go on and redo it, we wanna redo the street correctly, and so that kind of increased our cost a little bit, too. We wanna, if we're gonna do it, we just wanna do it right, instead of cutting the street into pieces and patching back in certain sections of it.
Councilman Wells?
If we're looking at three years, how much inflation would happen in three years?
That's what I'm really worried about, if it's inflating close to almost a million a year, or depending on a year.
We'll never get there.
Well, well, we do, we do have reserves that we could use and pay back, if in fact that, but we'll go over that tomorrow.
That's what I was gonna ask, sorry.
You know, it'll be a, it'll be a, a Tom thing, we'll have to advise us on how much we can do without risking ourselves, because we can't spend all of our reserves, obviously, something could happen.
I'd love to see the project go, though.
Yeah, it needs to be done.
They're really close, so.
Yeah, it needs to be done, so, well, thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
If we push, oh, sorry, if we push go, how long is that timeline?
Uh, we could probably get bid out and start within, if we started now, we could probably get the, get it going next summer, that's feasible.
We'll, we'll look at that tomorrow night, when we go over the budget. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Back to you, Tom.
Sure, a couple water-related issues. First off, I know everybody is interested about the possibility of water restrictions for this summer. I am happy to report that we have an excess of water right now, that is flowing to town of about a million gallons a day, that we have excess, so the water flow is really good right now, and for the early part of, of, of summer, we should be restriction-free, and we will be watching those flows as we get towards midsummer to late summer and remeasure, but for now, there will not be water restrictions at this point. Another water-related issue is on May fifth, Sunday, our water line between the plant and our town infrastructure going towards the, the tanks by the hospital had a hole in it, it developed a hole. We were able to find that Monday morning, and we put a clamp on that, and then later that afternoon, a second hole, a couple feet from there, about the size of a softball, developed, so we put a second clamp on that, and then we were gonna wait twenty-four hours before we covered to make sure it held, and a third hole developed, and it further up the line, and so we decided to remedy, remedy the situation. We replaced about thirty feet of the iron ductile line with PVC pipe, and this had been done just, just next to the stretch of line a few years back, we had to do the same thing, so we were able to connect in, into the other PVC, and then connect the other one back to our, our water line, and, and that has held, and so our tanks are, are holding, they are topped off at this point. We, we feel that there's about a mile stretch out of the three miles of that line that is very vulnerable to these types of breaks and holes and those things at this point. That stretch of line is on our list of things to do, it is a priority one project, and right now, we estimate that a twenty-inch water main is gonna be between two hundred and fifty and two hundred and seventy dollars per foot, so for those three miles in there, we will be looking at about fourteen million dollars to, to replace those, but we feel that that is urgent at this time, that it is critical that we get that, at, at least that middle mile of it redone or replaced to maintain our, our water system. With that, that, that's my report.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So, at two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy for twenty-inch pipe, is that iron ductile pipe again, or is that a poly or PVC? What route are you looking at?
Um, I have that from the consultants, and I'm not sure what that pipe is, I, I'll find that, what it is being replaced with.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Garner?
Oh, it's not regarding this, I just had a, or actually, I'll wait for direction, sorry, that's where, I'll wait for that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, city attorney report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Just a quick update, right now, I have, Legal and Lieutenant Frakes, we're currently attending the Rocky Mountain Prevention and Traffic Safety Summit in Laramie. It, you know, will help with our enforcement efforts regarding traffic and drug offenses occurring in our city and county. Don't have any other updates to provide council, working on nuisance ordinance and, and separating things out, weeds from vehicles, from other things, to make it more easier to work with, and I'm comparing with other jurisdictions within the state, how they've done that, as well as comparing how it's been approached in other jurisdictions across the nation that have similar laws like ours. Does council have any questions for Legal?
Councilman Lemon?
I know, last meeting, you said you were directed to look into the deer?
The status of the committee, but
The status of the committee?
Only the status of the committee, and I do apologize, I did misspeak at that, since I didn't know the rest of the, it was only the status of the committee, and I did forward the meeting minutes to all council members.
Yes, I want to thank you for doing that. I think there was some confusion between the mayor and Councilman Gardner, I noticed that he was at that last meeting of the deer committee, that probably was the meeting you were talking about. Mayor Wycombe was probably talking about a different meeting, because he wasn't there on the
I went to the first one.
The first one, okay.
He's the only one I attended.
Okay. And who gave you direction to look into the deer committee?
Just the status of the deer committee was a couple meetings ago.
Okay. I noticed on the, the end there, have you talked to any of the committee members at all?
I was only requested to look into the status of the, of the committee, the actual committee, and its processes are actually outside of my, for lack of a better word, jurisdiction.
It seems there was just a lot of excitable feelings at that last meeting, and then they didn't meet anymore, but thank you for giving that information, truly appreciate that.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is direction from the city council to city manager, does anybody have anything? I just have one thing, and I would like to thank you, Tom, that car is gone, and I do appreciate that. I got a phone call saying it's gone, so I do appreciate that. Anybody else? Councilman Garner?
Um, I was curious, so when I was trying to find those meeting minutes, I could find some of the minutes on our website, but I couldn't find all of the minutes. Who, are we, do we have a disconnect somewhere, or is, are we not updating those anymore? So, last time I seen it was updated, it was, looked like two thousand and nineteen, roughly, on the, on the deer committee. Do we, is it, the reason I'm asking, is that something that the chairs, the, the people in charge of those meetings do? Do they get, do they have access to update that, or do we do that internally?
I can't fully answer the question, but we do not have a fleshed-out city policy of posting all different committee minutes online. They are always available for public inspection, if requested, some are, some aren't, and that's something we've actually been discussing, as to whether we just create a policy that all, all of the city committees and boards, that the minutes are available online for inspection right away. But otherwise, if anybody's interested in looking at those, if any council member would like to look at those, we can always provide those, and if the public would like to review any of those, we can also always make them available for inspection.
Okay.
Councilman Garner?
And then on, since we're kind of discussing those minutes, it was said I wasn't at that meeting where this was brought up, I went through the urban system, the urban deer committee meeting minutes, and I could not find where the statement was made anywhere other than the one meeting that I did attend, where Chief Ward started the discussion, starting, stating that the Rollins Police Department will no longer participate in deer call with high-powered rifles. It's not discussed in there that it was the end of calling just with high-powered rifles. I just wanted to clarify that, because when I made my statement last week, I was told I was not at that meeting, and I was at the meeting, and I've gone through all the minutes before and after, and unless there was another meeting
December seventeenth.
I, which year?
Twenty twenty-one.
Where there's no deer calling?
No, that's the meeting you're referring to.
That statement was made on December seventeenth.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Right.
And it wasn't reflected in the minutes, but anybody that attended that meeting would attest to that, and it's not even worth the discussion, as long as we proceed forward, fix it, and do it, in my opinion, so.
No, I'm just, I'm just clarifying that the meeting I did attend, where it was said and discussed, I was there. You had said I wasn't there, and I am quoted in here agreeing with the chief on the high-powered rifles, so I just wanted clarification on that specifically, that's what I was referring Just want the point of clarification.
All right, is there anything else? Councilman Weisenberg?
So, on this urban deer committee, I did speak to one of the appointed members of that, and they are still wanting to do this and be active in this. They did say that we do have a game and fish biologist around, a newer one now, so maybe that's the route you could look at that way, too, for the game and fish side of the things, too, for the studies, because I believe that'd end up having to be a biologist doing that study anyways.
Is there anything else before we move on? All right, so the next thing on the agenda is new business, and we will, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of May seventh. Councilman Weisenberg?
I moved to approve the minutes of May seventh, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second? Then a motion made in seconded to approve the minutes of May seventh, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please open online voting.
Online voting is closed, a motion passes with six yeas and one abstaining, Councilmember Wells abstained.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a special use permit, I saw Councilman Wells hand up first, sorry.
I moved to approve a special use permit, PZ two four oh five oh oh one, for a daycare to be located at two nine seven nine Shetland Drive, more specifically known as Lot eighty-three, Highland Town Subdivision, BK fourteen oh one two fourteen, tax code zero five one two, the city of Rollins, Wyoming, eight two three oh one.
Second.
There's been a motion made in seconded to approve a special use permit, PZ dash twenty four oh five dash zero zero one, for a daycare to be located at twenty nine seventy-nine Shetland Drive, more specifically known as Lot eighty-three, Highland Town Subdivision, BK fourteen oh one slash two one four, tax code oh five one two, the city of Rollins, Wyoming, eight two three oh one. Is there any discussion? And Lou, I will let you tell us what's going on.
Honorable Mayor and Council, as Councilman Weisenberg stated earlier, we did have a meeting last week, it was voted unanimous to pass the special use permit for the daycare. We have asked the daycare provider to come in, if council had any questions for her. If council had any questions for her, she is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilman Wells?
I just have a comment. I know that another daycare is out of commission right now, and I think it's very important that we have good childcare in our community, so I want to thank you, Amy, for stepping up and being one of those people that will take care of children.
About how many children are you looking to have?
So I'm scheduled for 10 children, for the amount of space in my home.
Councilman Wells, Weisenberg?
I just want to say thanks, same thing as what Councilwoman Wells said. Other thing that is, need to be known is the state has already granted this. This is the last, last jump or hurdle, you want to say, is an approval from council for this to be an act of daycare in our community. So thank you again for taking that on. We're short on daycare in this community at this time, so.
Yeah, I second that. I wouldn't do it in a million years, but it's, everybody talks about the need, and Amy, thank you for providing that need. Does anybody have any other questions from Amy? Or Amy, I should say?
I want to share, the name is Cowboy Care Home Childcare, so really hits home with Wyoming, so. I needed it personally for my children. We went through three childcare providers in the last six, eight months, so I just put my two weeks in and did it myself, and with the recent events with the facility closing, I was planning on opening end of the year, but my DFS licensor reached out and basically begged me and said, "Put your trust in me, I'll help you expedite this as fast as possible." I started taking kids last Monday with the exemption of being able to keep kids, so with the state, you can only technically have two children or two separate families. So a lot of folks in town that are taking on the excess amount of kids, I really urge them to take the steps to the state to get certified. It's not difficult at all. The state is in such a need that they give you everything that you could possibly need to get certified, so just take the next step and just have the security for yourself to be licensed, so. I'm excited, and my families are patiently waiting for tonight.
Sure. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Yep.
I do want to say one more thing. I think this was the fastest turnaround we had from planning and joining to council.
Thank you.
For seven days.
They probably all have kids.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Yes, thank you. With no more discussion, I would ask for online voting open, please.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Amy. All right, next thing on our agenda is a renewal of restaurant concessionaire agreement. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the renewing of the restaurant concessionaire agreement of the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Restaurant with Edgar Wynn Hayman and the city of Rollins, beginning June 1st, 2024, and continuing through May 31st, 2025.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the renewing of the restaurant concessionaire agreement of the Rollins, of the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Restaurant with Edgar Wynn Hayman and the city of Rollins, beginning June 1st, 2024, and continuing through May 31st, 2025. Is there any discussion? Councilman Garner?
I have questions about the fee. Will this fee cover, Tom, will this fee cover all the usage costs at that facility? Because I know before we had a lower rate, the starting one, and then we were going to readjust, so this one will cover any, we won't, we're not going to be running in the negative with this, correct?
Correct. Honorable mayor and councilman Garner, that is correct. We looked into all of the costs that the city incurs throughout the operation and everything, and we added that in so that all those are covered in this renewal agreement.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, Councilman Wells?
I just want to say thank you, because this has been a challenge over several years, and we're lucky to have you.
Well, thank you.
So, thank you.
No, we love being there, and we did work it out with the budget, I think, and over the trash disposal and an increase rate, I believe, around 60 to 65% over the usage fee for the first contract. And I can't thank pretty much everybody that's right around me for all their help, you know, getting this up and going last year and then with the renewal this year, and hope we'll see you next year for another renewal, definitely.
Well, I've eaten out there, and you do a really good job.
Well, thank you so much. And of course, we like having everyone there, and you know, just getting ready for summer and having a good golf season, hopefully, with no snow.
Soon as you put snow on, huh? All right, any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
Awesome, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
We'll see you all soon, you're welcome.
Thanks, gentlemen. All right, the next thing on our agenda is item D. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the city of Rollins 1998 American La France Fire Truck as a surplus fire engine and authorize the city fire chief to advertise the bid for three consecutive weeks in the Rollins Times.
Second.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the city of Rollins 1998 American La France Fire Truck as a surplus fire engine and authorize the city fire chief to advertise the bid for three consecutive weeks in the Rollins Times. Is there any discussion? Alan, do you have anything to say?
Honorable mayor and council, just thank you for the opportunity to bring this to you to pass this on. I say pass it on. It's a great opportunity to provide a piece of equipment that we are no longer using to someone else that can use it, is what we're trying to do here.
Is it in good operating?
It is in operating condition. It is a 26-year-old truck. We have all the test records and everything up through, depending on where we're at and which ones I found lately, 21, 22, I'm right in that, right? I know last year, my predecessor chose not to have any of the actual NFPA tests done, the pump test, ladder test, those kinds of things. So it's really not too far out of compliance that way, those kinds of things. But that's something that can very easily be done. The truck's been sitting, it's not like it's had excessive wear or use or anything else with those things. It's anticipated it will have normal repair items before that pump test would be successful, those kinds of things. And that's typical with any truck, you have valves that leak, and so you can't draw vacuum. They just need maintenance and sometimes a seal kit and stuff put in and those kinds of things to make that operable. But there's nothing major that we're aware of. There's, like I said, there's wear and tear, and there's stuff, because it is 26 years old, that's going to have to be maybe worked on a little bit, those kinds of things. And as equipment does when it sits and does nothing, there's things that creep up, so.
Sure, everything rubber goes to heck.
Yep.
All right, any questions? Vice Mayor Sanger?
Are we going to try to keep that within the state itself so that that...
So, yes, well, as, I've been working on, for lack of anything better to call it an RFP, because it's not really a money thing, but it is kind of that way. So part of that, and one of the criteria is that we will give priority to departments within the state of Wyoming, and more specifically within Carbon County, if we can do that. So that's kind of how, so if we don't get anybody, then we'll kind of go out from there a little bit, but our intention is to keep it in the state.
Very beautiful truck. Okay. Any further discussion? Please open online voting. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. And we'll move on to item E. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the bid submitted by Long Mechanical Solutions of Casper, Wyoming, for the removal and install of two new Lennox rooftop units for the city of Rollins Police Department in the amount of $49,387.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the bid submitted by Long Mechanical Solutions of Casper, Wyoming, for the removal and install of two new Lennox rooftop units for the city of Rollins Police Department in the amount of $49,387. Is there any discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
Tom, I believe this was already budgeted also, right, for the repairs and maintenance of them?
Yes, honorable mayor, Councilman Weisenberg. Last fall, we brought a budget amendment to council for the overall deferred maintenance, which was about a million and a half. And so when we go out to the RFPs, we bring those to council still to be approved, to issue the RFP, but it is a budget amendment that is in the budget right now.
Okay. Any further discussion? Lynn?
Mayor and council, if you look on board docs, the resolution that you approved for the amendment is 9-2023. It's on each one of the board docs bids. So if you look at your attachments, I included the resolution that was authorized back then.
Thanks.
So if you had questions about it, but yes.
Okay.
It is on board docs.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Lynn.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is item F. I would entertain a motion, Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the bid submitted by Long Mechanical Solutions of Casper, Wyoming, for the replacement and installation of four new Lennox rooftop units, RTUs, and replacing the JCI direct digital controls in the amount of $158,975.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the bid submitted by Long Mechanical Solutions of Casper, Wyoming, for the replacement and installation of four new Lennox rooftop units and replacing the JCI direct digital controls in the amount of $158,975. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item G, I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve the bid submitted by Long Mechanical Solutions of Casper, Wyoming, and Engineering Design Associates of Casper, Wyoming, for the replacement and upgrading of the digital, direct digital controls at the city of Rollins Recreation Center totaling
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the bid submitted by Long Mechanical Solutions of Casper, Wyoming, and Engineering Design Association of Casper, Wyoming, for the replacement and upgrading the direct digital controls at the city of Rollins Recreation Center in Rollins, Wyoming totaling $319,503. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is, I don't know anything about HVAC systems, or I want to preface it that, is this could be air conditioning as well?
Yes.
So when I run, it's going to not be scorching hot?
You can call me if it is. I'll make sure that everybody's happy.
You're a brave man.
Forty-two years of doing this, so, yeah, bumped my head a few times.
It gets hot there in the summer.
It does, and that's why we're going through this and designing it properly so we can have a cooling system in there. And we're looking for an upgraded system that's going to be a miniature chiller, which is going to be easier to control, the whole system, the whole building, and that's what we're looking for right now. And that's the whole purpose of going through and engineer to design all the cooling in there. And I think we can get this done with a minimal amount, believe it or not, and especially with today's technology and the equipment that's out there, it's amazing. I've been doing this for a long time, and it just blows my head away just to know that thing is out there.
I asked about this several years ago, and they told me it couldn't be done, so I'm actually kind of blown away right now.
Yeah, it can be done, it's just who you talk to, that's all. Yeah, but it can be done.
Awesome.
Yeah, and it's going to get done.
Thank you, Councilman Weisenberg?
With the approval of these, what's the timeline for this actually happening and being replaced on all of these? Sorry, I should have asked previous, but...
No, that's fine. I spoke with the companies that submitted the bid, and as of tomorrow, if this all passes and it gets signed tomorrow, I can get that ball rolling. Police Department, the Public Works Building can be done in, within about three to four weeks, starting. And the Recreation Center, because it is a bigger facility and a lot more work, that's about October, October-ish is when we're planning, so. Yeah, I'm really excited, now unfortunately, the summer's going to be a little bit hot, but you know, it's just the way it is coming out, and there's just, there's some equipment that, I ordered a barge unit for the Training Center for the Fire Department in Station Two. That was in January, the middle of January, and it was supposed to have been here two months ago, and now they're saying middle of June. I should get it, and I'm like, wow, great, okay, so. They're kind of like been on me about it, and I'm like, I apologize, I have no control over it. This unit, I've searched everywhere, and I got, I finally found one in California, a different country, so it takes a while to get here, you know, so.
On a slow boat.
On a slow boat, yeah, from California, so, Los Angeles.
All righty. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, next item is item H. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve Engineering Design Associates of Casper, Wyoming, bid for design and construction of new boilers and air handling units, replacement for the city of Rollins City Hall Building totaling $51,000. Sorry.
One second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the Engineering Design Associates of Casper, Wyoming, bid for design and construction of new boilers and air handling unit, replacement for the city of Rollins City Hall Building totaling $51,000. Is there any discussion? Vice Mayor Sanger?
This is not related to whether it's an air handling unit or not. This is related to consent agenda. All of these can be under the consent agenda so that we don't have to go through this process of reading each individual one, because we already approved it through resolution. So we put them on here in case there was any immediate questions, but we don't have to do this. We can put them all in consent, run off on them, move on.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I like it this way, just because of the dollar amount, more clarity, and, but, I understand what you're saying too. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
Thank you, and thank you, Anthony, for all the hard work getting these up to speed, and people will really like you better next year.
Yeah, they would. It's been a lot of work in about two years in the project and getting everything ready, and Lou, Laskon, being a big help as well, myself, we've just been pushing the issue, and we got our... And we got our second phase coming up too, been working on that. So we're looking really, really good financial-wise and just getting everything rolling and getting air for the rec center, which I know tons of people are gonna be very, very happy about that.
You guys make a great team, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next thing on our agenda is item I. I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to accept the resolution amending municipal fee schedule. Appendix E effective thirty days from this approval.
Second. There's a motion made and seconded to accept the resolution amending municipal fee schedule. Appendix E effective thirty days from approval. Is there any discussion? Councilman Garner?
Um, Tom, these, these that we're looking at, um, was this, this was the third option, correct?
That's correct.
This is the one that should get us the grant. It's not guaranteed, but it should get us the closest and give us the best opportunity to get that, that loan, or the grant and everything, correct?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Garner, so under this scenario that we're asking to be adopted, we have two million dollars of infrastructure that is the result of the lead and copper rule. And the federal government has not come out with the funding for that yet, but it does qualify for that funding. And so we estimated a half a million dollars for that, five hundred thousand. And if that does not come through, then we would have one point five million to do in infrastructure. But the way that it is written, there would be two million in infrastructure, and we'd get a half a million dollar grant. And then the loan that we would receive on the infrastructure would be phased in. And so only about one quarter of that expected loan payment is in this scenario. So that each year after this, unless we get an influx of funds from the state or from the feds or from somewhere, we'd have to increase water rates each year according to that loan that we would get to cover the loan payments.
And as for the sewer part of it, this gets us where we can do hopefully a project per year, correct, to replace sewers?
So the sewer part of it, we have our project schedules. This will not get us through a full year of that, but it will get some of those projects done, about half of what we had anticipated. So we can at least start on those projects.
Whereas before, there was no way we were touching any of those projects.
We were actually in a deficit position or approaching an overall fund reserves deficit position. So this will help us receive the funding to at least begin those projects.
Thank you.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Um, I just, I know during the discussion of all the fee increases and stuff, we discussed like other options, like not just other options, but options that we need to kind of see through different opportunities of sewer, how the sewer is charged to maybe residential areas and commercial areas being the same for that fund. Water, multiple uses on one tap and on the utility bill. So I just think we need to still pursue those options and look into that hard and see what we can do. I don't like to put all this stress on all the citizens, but until we can get that figured out also, I think we have almost no choice to be, you know, until we can get the funding. And then we can go back and look at maybe if the funding will increase enough or however we could possibly decrease fees if available to. So I just want to make sure we do not lose sight of that.
Councilman Garner?
Uh, sorry, I had one more question. Tony brought this up last time we discussed these rates increases. Were we able to find, or are we still looking for the low income, you know, help for them? I know we're looking, but have we found anything? Or is there...
Uh, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Garner, we are definitely mindful and searching, earnestly searching, because we know the burden that this is upon everyone. And so we are honestly searching for those solutions, but we have not really found those as of yet. The ones that we have used in the past no longer exist. A lot of those nonprofit organizations that have helped. And so we are in search of new help with that. Yes, we are definitely mindful of that.
I do know the Salvation Army will do it one time, the one-time help. And then YO Health does have some funding that can help certain people. But though the amount of help is limited.
Myra, do you have?
Myra?
Um, I did prepare a one-page handout that did discuss those options, which are the most obvious in our community, as well as some other things for people to pursue. And that is on our website, and it's at the front desk also.
Thanks, Myra.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there any further discussion? Casey, would you please come up and tell us who you are and sign in?
My name's Casey Wales, and I had a couple of things to talk on that water deal, and I kind of wanted to get the chance. One thing I think we're overlooking is that the state constitution says the water department is to be separate from all other departments. Cannot get money from, or give money to, or help, or assist, or employ, or do anything with other departments. Currently, you're not charging the city departments for their water use. I don't know if we have a breakdown on a per gallon cost of one gallon, uh, the million gallons of what it costs us to deliver. And I understand that we need reserves for taking care of problems like this. But a lot of the problems we've had is mismanagement. I mean, I could go through stories and stories and stories of how the crews have gone out and had to do the same repairs three, four times. I can tell you bulkheads that they didn't put in and lines bust apart because they don't do it right. Uh, I don't know if they're not getting oversight, or they just don't want to. They get lazy, like all of us humans do, and just push on. But too many times, you see them repairing the same repair they did, repairing a hole in a pipe. You've got a hole in a pipe, you change the pipe for the length of it. You don't just dig it up and put a Band-Aid on it. When you go to the doctor with a broken arm, you don't have them put a Band-Aid on your finger. So we're spending a lot of money that way. So those things need to be looked in. And that's what scares us about increasing the fees, is that the mismanagement that we've seen will reoccur. It'll come back again. So that, in a sense, we all understand having to have reserves and where we got to where we're at, and we don't have reserves, we spent the money. But the big issue is, all departments are to be built for their water. All water is to be equitable. If you want to find a way to help the poor people, that's great. And I know as a landlord, when I have a poor person move in and I give them pre-rent, I still get stuck with the water bill because they don't hold anybody else but the landowner responsible, which is debatable as its locality. But that's not the issue here. The issue is here is how are we gonna fix the problems we've allowed to creep up on us due to mismanagement? And are we gonna fall back into mismanagement after this council's gone? And then the water rates go up, and wherever we are sitting, that maybe a better idea is to float another tax and see if the people wouldn't support a separate tax for the fixing of the infrastructure, just to, you know...
I will tell you that the ability for towns to pass taxes, very limited. There's certain ones we can and can't. The six penny tax for infrastructure was done, but we can't do that again until that's paid off. And there's a long time. And you said something, Casey, that I'm not trying to be argumentative, but when you say, when you have a hole in a pipe, you replace the whole pipe, well... When they're twenty miles long, and...
They weren't twenty miles.
You just...
They were right next to each other.
Well, they're twenty, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Why don't you put a piece of pipe in and take the whole thing?
But why do they quit?
Analyze what the damage is before just jumping to it.
We, I, I'm just gonna stand up for our crews and tell you that they're the hardest-working people I've ever seen. And I believe, I believe they're doing the very best that they can. And again, I'm not trying to be argumentative. Everybody can have their opinion, but my opinion is that they do, they do the very best they can with what they have to work with.
Well, my personal involvement would be right downtown when I had to dig up the water line so they could tie in their little building with a four-inch line going in there for the sprinkler system. And because we loosen the dirt behind that fitting, it has to be put in with a concrete bulkhead. I told those guys, it's the city's responsibility. You need to, you need to backfill that concrete. The engineer comes walking down the alley and says, what's that, what are all those chunks of concrete doing in there? I said, that's the city's, that's what the city did. I told them, in their own books. It shows them to put in a concrete bulkhead. Didn't happen. That's why they keep failing. How much money does it cost us to continue to mismanage? Why did the, why did the reserve reservoir go bad? Why did we have problems at the pumping station? Because everybody wanted to override. Nobody wanted to go fix or do anything about it. Those things cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Casey, we're very well aware of that. Can't turn the clock back.
For sixty-five years, I've been very well aware of that.
Well...
I'm just hoping that while we discuss the price increase, we look at the others.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks to council.
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
I just want to say, Casey, thank you for at least bringing that up for acknowledging water is a different fund. I've spoke about that multiple times, about the enterprise funds and how that is, has to be self-sustaining. And I appreciate you as a citizen coming up here and saying you recognize that too, so.
I also, although, would like the council and the city attorney to realize that department, the water department has to be separate. The other departments need to pay their water bill.
That, that is something we will look into. Thank you. All right. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with six yeas and one nay. The one nay was Councilmember Lumen.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is an executive session. Councilman Wells?
I move to go into executive session at nine oh nine PM per Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh five. Consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law in matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is a party or proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at nine oh nine PM. Any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with six yeas and one nay. The one nay is Councilmember Garner.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
You have to post it.
Oh, I didn't have it. It's, once this executive session is... Oh, there wasn't an application?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
What's that?
The discussion here, basically.
What's that?
It's a case of discussing how do we manage all money and change all piping.
Some serious issues to talk about. They seem to focus, uh, up here. Wondering what's going on. Not always, I mean, that's...
I, I think the entire system is like...
Always.
We're not getting ones. Could you imagine? We had a big tour event at the same time, we could have longer. You stretch your wire and train it, and then you have water at the same level.
Yep.
Um, so we do leave the record, it on, the sound on for the meeting. And then, um, Lynn, that's not gonna stop the meeting, so if, not that there's an executive session tomorrow, but you could always ask her, like, can you just stop the recording? But you just push the same two buttons. Yeah.
Are we recording that?
We say I would sound through the whole executive session. Can I have a little, kind of, to make sure that you have...
I'm going off here.
No, my hand out of what you should do when you're meeting. Then we leave it in the, the SOP. Oh, yeah, sure, my friend's, which is very important. Yeah, usually she does. Sometimes council has lots of questions with her after the, like, when the meeting ends, so I sometimes just go to lock them before, they're just not open for a long term. But it's, you know. Whoever is at last, I always make sure that locks.
They might be taking those to my life.
He's going through the hole. But, I mean, I was, so, we're going through it, and it's...
I need to, we need to, yeah, in a discussion.
Yeah. Do you want to show you where the door, the keys are, just so you know? In case you're... Yes, there, there. Uh, Alan, or Elizabeth. How do you call Alan? Do we call him the right name or how he's called? Yes, one time they come up, I'll do that.
Right back.
Yeah. So one thing you have to know when people come out of executive session, so, that's why Lumen's asking me. Oh, so for any item, Lynn puts together a book, she prints the actual information off of board docs itself. I don't find something that's actually, I'll just, so like, so you have that to reference, and then it's written out with what it is, and then you motion second, and then what the vote is in any discussion.
So then you do this part tomorrow too, is that...
I think she, what she's saying is she doesn't need this part tomorrow because, like, tonight, there's so many...
We should have, like, one motion kind of...
Yeah. And we don't, we do, um, action minutes, so she doesn't incorporate all the discussion. It's just to have the record. But yeah, it's, I mean, it's not too hard. Now you've seen it, so I'm going again, especially unexpectedly.
Sure, I remember all this for more than fifteen...
I need you to piece of paper, man. Okay, well, I think, I've taught you all that I wanted to teach you today.
Where are you guys going?
Daisy? My brother lives there, so, yes.
On the phone?
See if I can find one of these. Is it maybe, or if you want? Yeah, did Luke leave? Did Luke leave? Okay. Okay, so, well, we need to get together, the, the documents.
So, let me show you where I've got... I talked this one, you know, you need about this a little bit earlier, just as far as, you know, just sort of, I don't want you to... I would really sort of watch your question. One of God's, basically, stuff together, various specifications are, basically, the whole street include all the nations, so the direction statement, not necessarily, you know, if you meet the, you know, you know, your plan, your utilization, operations, the transfer, delivery, those kind of things are all, that's some information about the, you know, how to contact us, proposal, basically, you know, basically, kind of what we're gonna go through to evaluate. So, I don't know, there must be an establishment, couple of like, oh, that took, yeah, those kind of things, you know, that type stuff, so, uh, you'll need, just kind of off the base, like, those splits, those kind of things.
Let me also send you a couple samples, a couple that I have done since I've been here for the last three years, and that way...
Absolutely, because I was going up a little bit, I could find the station, which I have, which one is...
So, I will send those, um, to you?
And I have pictures, basically, this is a little, this one picture, but I don't know that this has to be an advertisement or whatever.
Okay, so the advertisement part usually, I'm not, based, and I'm just doing it really shortly, so... And, um, this was, I will, well, no, I will, um, it is a PDF, so they have all this information, and definitely have complete text. So this is, this is really, this is really...
So, you know, like, this, this label, this, you know, exactly, there's two year old panels, they're all there.
Mm-hmm. So this is really great information, and I can scan it, and, um, submit it, my, on the city, saying, hey, I just wanted to know this a little bit, and then, um, you'll have your name, my name, contact, your city, your unit, dates, all together, figure out, making sure that our, probably, these, these things, posting, something like that.
Three weeks consecutive of occurring outside of that, but that's, that's only...
Yeah, I will see. And the first time to, for the extension, so, I can gather my pictures together, I'll put on the website, and I'll send you an invite, because I have it in there, I'll put these two, to give them, here, sitting, all of that's okay?
Yep, that's, absolutely.
A full work, yes, that occasion, we keep, we're gonna keep, along with the mission, so I can make sure that everybody is present, and he'll, you know, who, who else, that would be, if he just wanted to, like, help me, and, um, Delphine's coming, um, keep it, I'll see, maybe, send it to you, and, um, I'll be better than you, um, and then we usually have, maybe five days, seven days, maybe two, before, that's our deadline, um, anybody can, whatever, just, um, cost, cost you.
The one interest we have right now, if we can, this process happen, they take the trouble, they won't, but, I'm not saying that it's, will have a process.
So, but that's normal, we have lots of, so, I usually put in a whole, do a follow-up survey, so, in case something happens, I'm just giving it to my house.
Okay, anything else I need to worry about here?
There's not, there's a lot more.
All right, have a great evening, and I will see you tomorrow.
Hello? Is there anybody out there?
Is there anybody out there?
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do you have one second?
Yeah.
Okay, so the hotel room, you got that?
I did.
And then I sent earlier tonight, they just sent out the agenda.
Oh, did they?
Yes, so I forward that to you. This is, I just received it earlier today. From her line.
Oh, that works.
Okay.
Appreciate it. If you're gonna send us the, um. That email from February from the Y dot?
Yes, it's not an email, it was a hard copy letter.
Oh, even better.
So, I will scan that, yes, I have it in minutes and I will scan it and send that up. I'll scan it and give it to Tom and he'll send it off to you guys. Okay, or whatever he likes.
Yeah, that works. Is Tom? Is Tom downstairs though? Is he gone? He's downstairs.
I have no idea. I can't, I don't. I don't go past the door.
Can't, can't remember where people are.
No, I, I just stay up here.
I wonder, I mean, we're at the end of the meeting. If I had to leave, it's not gonna hurt anything, right?
You have to leave?
If, if I had to.
I just have to make a notion, a motion, not a motion, but a.
Just a note that I left already?
That you left the chamber. Left a meeting at a certain time. Do you need to leave? Because I can fix it.
Well, I was just thinking, my kids are in my dad's. It's nine forty. Forgot to warn him how long these meetings will last.
Because there's three minutes. Do you approve?
Yeah.
The adjournment.
Let's see what happens. See that. Then we have a meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Seven thirty, okay. Oh, um, I was gonna ask. For tomorrow's meeting, are there not documents?
He hasn't finished them yet, so as soon as I have it, I will upload it. It will be a hard copy for everybody.
Oh, that, that works even better, just from marking up everything.
So, you would like a hard copy?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know sometimes you like electronics, so I just want to make sure I know what you're looking for.
When it's these big ones, I like, I don't mind the hard, I like the hard copy because I can mark through it, but, um. What I like, why I like the electronics, I can search them, search the document for keywords.
Sure.
Fly around through it.
But it will be uploaded tomorrow.
Okay.
He's just putting the finishing touches on.
Sounds good. Maybe. It won't be done forever. And I can at least be. Ready to go. Let's see, I do not need my computer for. Can you see who's logged into the meeting? Doesn't show you that, huh?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna take off.
Okay.
I'm sorry if they didn't mean.
All right.
Awesome, thanks. Have a good night.
You too, I'll see you tomorrow night then.
That's soon. Sorry, they, they caught me before I got out the door. So, easy to face. Sorry.
You gotta go pick up a baby?
Yeah.
Does her older brother take pretty good care of her?
Um, they both do.
They both do, aw. You got it? Come out?
I'm waiting. Right, like.
I have enough for a worm right here.
Well, we need someone to, uh.
We need someone to. In a position of power.
Yeah. Oh, Lord. I just gotta wait for him to hurry up and get over here. Fifty-five, watch this. Maybe, maybe it's getting like walker, walker speed.
Councilman Weisenberg.
I moved to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four, dash four oh five at nine fifty-five PM.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four, dash four oh five at nine fifty-five PM.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Seeing none, open online voting, thank you.
Online voting is open.
Yeah, I was gonna be on top of them too.
Online voting is closed, a motion passes with seven yeas.
Was there any objections for matters discussed in executive session? Seeing none, we will move on to further business. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of April second, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second to approve the executive session minutes of April second, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Vice Mayor Sanger?
Um, April second, um, councilors Tanya Lumen, Daryl Garner, Will Epstein.
Okay.
I'm gonna just tell you which ones, who was where, okay, that way we're not guessing.
Yeah, thank you.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting is closed, a motion passes with five yeas and two abstains, two abstains with Councilmember Garner.
All right, uh, next thing on the agenda is item D, uh, Councilman Weisenberg.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting as presented.
Second.
A motion made in second to approve the executive session minutes on April eighth, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion, Council or Vice Mayor Sanger?
April eighth, abstain, Chris, uh, Councilor Chris Weisenberg.
He can't make the motion.
Well, he can't make the motion then?
Nope.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Online voting is open.
Okay, thank you.
Coming up?
Always sounds like...
Abstain, whatever.
Room snotty.
Where, oh, it's our now.
A distant one. Online voting is closed, a motion passes with six yeas and one abstain, and one abstain with Councilmember Weisenberg.
All right, uh, we'll move on to item E. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council minute, meeting as presented.
Second.
A motion made in second to approve the executive session minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting, oh, excuse me, uh, Vice Mayor Sanger?
Um, Councilor Jacqueline Wells and Daryl Garner abstain.
Very.
Thank you.
Online voting is closed, a motion passes with five yeas and two abstains, two abstains with Councilmember Wells and Councilmember Garner.
All right, is there any other motions? Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve outside counsel to continue pursue the suggested planned.
Second.
A motion made in second to authorize outside counsel to pursue the, uh...
Suggested plan.
Suggested plan, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none?
It's Keston at with you.
Yep.
Okay, it has to be verbal, cause there is...
Yay.
Yay?
Yay.
Yes. Yeah, anybody, uh, nay same time?
And abstain.
Abstain, yep. All right, is there anything else that needs to come before this body? Seeing nothing, I'll adjourn this meeting. The next meeting is on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting starting at seven thirty. After that, it's June fourth, twenty twenty-four, work session in regular city, uh, council meeting starting at six PM. And on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting starting at six PM. I think one of them got changed, which one was?
Sorry, it's on the bottom.
The spatial one changed from six to seven thirty.
It's just seven thirty, I may, I'm a little off already.
Real quick question on, uh, next meeting, are we having, um, or nomination of who will be on the resolution committee at that time? Right? Or have we done that? There's resolutions in WAM, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, no, and I haven't seen anything for the resolution, they, WAM did not send me any. They only sent me who was on the voting, oh, they did, the voting in the second.
They sent...
So the voting first was the mayor and then the second was Tanya, who was not...
So... Did we already, we already... I'm just wanting, we did submit that, okay, so who else is gonna go? You, you're gonna be there? Okay, so...
But on the resolution committee.